I would like to call the order of November 8th Planning Commission at 6:05. Mr. Rounds, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand. Hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Planning Secretary, may you have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Carver Hall?
Hello.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rounds?
Here.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Here.
Chairperson Arnold?
Here.
Thank you. Ex-party communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex-party communications about public hearings. Seeing none?
I have none.
Okay, great. Item five, public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone join us through Zoom can use the raise hand functions if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the Planning Secretary announces your name.
I do apologize, Commissioners. I'm being rejoined as a panelist. Please hold.
Okay.
I do have someone with a raised hand. It's RD Ferreros?
Yes, I do want to make a public comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
When the case 985 and CUP 822 come up, I would like to make a public comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Vice Chair, there's no other raised hand functions at this time.
Thank you. I will now close the public comment and move on to the next item. Item number six. Approval of the minutes of October 18th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Commissioner Rounds will move.
Commissioner Carver Hall, second.
A motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Commissioner Carver Hall. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, public hearing. Continued for the September 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Adoption of mitigated negative declaration, general plan amendment, GPA case number 31, zone change, case number 140, tentative track map number 83383, development map approval, case number 982, modification permit, case number 1340, GPA case number 31, a request to amend the general plan land use designation of an existing parcel from the public facility to multiply family residential and ZC case number 140, a request to change the zoning of an existing parcel from public facilities to R3 multiple family residential zone and TTM number 83383, a request to approve the subdivided, to subdivide the airspace of an approximately three acre parcel to 83 residential condominium units. EPA case number 982, a request for development plan approval to allow the construction of a new 63-unit condominium development and a part tenant improvements on the subject property and MCD case number 1340, a request for modification of property development standards to allow for a six and one-half foot-high wall to encroach into the required front setback area along Florence Avenue. The subject property is located at 11733 Florence Avenue within the PF Public Facilities Zone, Malaya Homes Incorporated. Okay, so I would like to call upon Director of Planning Wayne Morale to please present item number seven.
Thank you, Chairperson Jimenez. Members of the Planning Commission, staff is recommending that this item be continued to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. And that is to finalize the traffic report. The last time that the item was continued, it was to address issues raised by some of the residents, including traffic. We've now gotten all of that information. So we are ready to move forward at the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. So that is staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Could I call up the applicant? Is the applicant wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, okay. Yes, sorry.
Just wanted to, if you could open the public hearing?
First, okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if there was a public hearing since there's continuance?
It's continuous, I guess reopen, but it's already open.
Okay. Okay, so is there, I would open the public hearing at 6:13, it looks like. And the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this item? If so, please approach the podium.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Jimenez, members of the Commission. My name is Chad Brown, Vice President of Planning and Development with Malaya Homes. And I'm excited to be before you tonight, urging you to hold to the continuation date of December 13th as recommended by staff. I do want to point out that housing is an important element for the city and ask that you concur with the staff recommended date certain or declare an earlier special meeting time for the Planning Commission to meet. For this project, this project has already been delayed what will be three months from the hearing time that was scheduled in September. And we respectfully request that there be no further delays beyond this December 13th recommended date so that staff can analyze the traffic data that has been updated and requested as a result of some of the concerns that you've heard from residents and public comments as well as letters. All interested parties and neighboring property owners will continue to have access to a meeting if there are conflicts with their schedules for that December 13th date. Due to the established remote hearing and Zoom setups that you have, anybody or anywhere in the world could comment and participate in the public hearing. In addition, the project is also required to go to your city council regardless of the outcome of your ultimate decision on this. So there will be future times and opportunities for public comment to be heard and granted and reviewed by those interested parties. A Monday evening in December, which is the date of December 13th, is not necessarily conflicting with holidays. It's a Monday evening is rather normal to have meetings on throughout the cities. And I would also like to point out that perhaps I'm reiterating in a letter that I had sent in today, reiterating the same points. But we held a community meeting on this project on October 20th this past month. And we sent invitations out to everyone in the adjacent neighborhood as well as everybody who signed the petition against this project with illegible address provided. At that meeting, we scheduled it to be held at the actual church site, the facility itself. So being a matter of convenience and a matter of proximate location so that those adjacent neighbors would be able to walk over and join us. Unfortunately, the meeting was only attended by one neighboring property owner. And it's very unfortunate because there was information that she was unaware of that are part of the design features of this project that I think addresses a number of the issues and concerns that you've been hearing about. And again, it is very disappointing that with all of the comments that you have heard that members of the, of the public and specifically the adjacent property owners were not willing to come out and meet with us and hear us and have dialogue directly with us. So it is with that that I please ask that you do not extend a continuation beyond the December 13th date and instead stick with what the staff recommendation has been stated here tonight or at an earlier time if more can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I would like to state that we did receive an email requesting that this item be continued to the January meeting and that email was sent to all of the Planning Commission. So as part of the record, in addition to Chad's email or letter, you also have as part of the record the other email that requested it to be continued to January.
And just to note, Commissioners, a hard copy of all letters are on your diocese for you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter?
Commissioners, I have Irma Witron.
Oh, you have, okay.
Yes, I have two comment cards.
Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening, my name is Irma Witron. I live at 10726 Lake Center Park Lane. I am one of the neighbors that Mr. Chad Brown was referring to in regard to formulating an opinion on what is happening next door to our home and to our neighborhood. Our grievances were outlined in letter clearly to the city that was submitted in September, September 7th specifically, which included 150 signatures of residents and community members that were opposing this project for many reasons. Many aspects of the project to clarify, this is not an anti-housing position but is a design position with regard to how the project is being designed. With regard to our request to continuing this item to January 10th of 2022, the request stems from the fact that many community members, including yourselves, I'm sure, have plans for the December holidays. Many of our children's vacations begin exactly on that time, December 13th and around that time. And specifically for that reason, the correspondence that was submitted today states, "In order to maintain harmony in our homes, this project has caused a lot of angst, a lot of a lot of confusion, a lot of stress to many households, and we're asking just for a few more weeks. And if at the kindest of someone's heart, they can continue this item, that's what we're asking for." We're not asking for anything more that shouldn't, is out of line. It is very reasonable to request something like this. It is very common for large items not to be scheduled during the December holidays. Furthermore, with regard to the comment being made that this project has been delayed, it has not been delayed. It has been given the time that it needs in order to analyze the different aspects of the project that affect the very residents that live in the city. As appointed council members, our council members are tasked with deliberating on all aspects of the project and as designated, planning commissioners appointed by city council members, this should not be looked as a delay that leading up from September up until now, or rather us all doing our due diligence to bring up questions and so the questions can be answered. The reasons that there are additional studies that are being done is because we asked very good questions with regard to traffic. I guarantee you that additional traffic studies would not have been done if everyone involved had felt that the project was already addressing those comments. So please give it the time that it needs. In addition, I'd like to end by saying that the September 13th staff report did not contain the conditions of approval for this project. It has lacked that information, even though I submitted a records request, that information has not been provided. But rather I have been provided with the same link that omits the conditions of approval that are being proposed for this project. And for that reason, I further request that this project be continued until January so that the residents can review the conditions of approval that are proposed and that were omitted from the September 13th staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Norma?
I do apologize, your last name?
Hernan?
It's okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Norma Hernandez. I live on 10838 Flalun Avenue, which is across the street from the proposed project. The reason for my visit today is definitely, as Ms. Witron mentioned, we would like to continue this item to January 10th. It is very important that we allow, you know, everybody to consider the fact that the holidays will impose on people's attendance. My own daughter will be coming back from college and we will be taking a trip during that weekend, actually during that week. And so I hope that you would extend not only just to myself but to other residents who are very concerned about this. I also wanted to speak to a comment that Mr. Chad mentioned. I wanted to remind everybody that I, for one, along with various other people, have had trouble getting responses from several parties here at the city. You know, I CC'd so many people and just implored and just requested time and time again for for responses by email and only after multiple attempts do I receive the responses. So as to Chad's point, I did not attend that meeting that he had. And one of the reasons was is I did send our Planning Director Wayne Morale various emails requesting for maybe participation from the city with the residents and the developer because I didn't think it would be appropriate for myself, somebody who is not a planner, somebody who does not know, you know, everything that there is to do with the project. I wanted maybe the city to be there so that we can come together as a city, as a resident, as a developer and come together and really problem solve. Get together and just come to a conclusion, what can be done to make the community better, to bring more housing and to get the job done. Unfortunately, I didn't get any responses until maybe the day of. I think it was four or five o'clock and Mr. Morale, I've sent multiple emails to him directly. It took me maybe about four or five, maybe even six emails to get responses. And all to say that when I finally did, it was the day of, I didn't realize until that very afternoon that he said he would be there but without making comment. And I just don't think that the attention that this project deserves is being given. And I know that for myself, you know, I'm in a completely different line of business, but I'm expected to reply to emails quickly with some type of response. Even if it was to say received, I'll get back to you in a couple of days and then get back to somebody in a couple of days. I have not had that same courtesy extended to me. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's okay for me to have to retouch it all for myself. It's not fair. Now imagine the rest of the residents that just have no idea how to go about this. So I ask that you, the Planning Commission and the City Council, really take that into consideration. Give us more time and allow the residents, because I know they, some of them are confused about the dates, are confused about the communication. So with that said, please allow the residents, the City Council and yourselves to have more time to deliberate on this matter. It's very urgent to my neighborhood, to my community, and I just request, please, please, you know, give it some time so that we can probably, you know, get the community out here and make sure we get these problems solved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Planning Wayne Morale, no, there's no other speakers at this time.
The applicant is given an opportunity to, for a rebuttal if he chooses to do so. But then staff would also like to speak as to some of the items that were stated prior to the Planning Commission making a decision.
Okay, that's fine.
So. So Chad, if you want to, if you want to proceed, then that would be fine.
Once again, good evening. I don't wish to debate, rebut any, any of the statements and so forth that have been made. On the notices that were sent out for the community meeting, I did receive four replies from individuals saying that they would not attend. And the one person that does live in the neighborhood that did attend was one that didn't even reply, but she was aware of it and she wanted to come over and find out information because she was interested in the project. I'm, I'm asking that in, in the world of development, in the world of design and in planning, time is money and of the essence. And this project had a traffic study with it in September. I think staff wished to continue the item from September 13th to tonight so that they could get some specific information and some additional specific studies in line, understand and ensure that there weren't any impacts. It's my understanding that the updated traffic studies with additional intersections, and I may be stepping out of line a little bit because I haven't seen it, but I do understand that there are no additional impacts and so forth that are, that have been found or discovered as a result of the additional studies. But that's up for your city traffic engineer and your city traffic engineering consultant who's prepared that under the guy, under the, under the oversight of the city staff to be stating. Again, I don't wish to get into a debate or discussion directly with the applicants. I wish that they would have come out on the 20th when we had information, had plans and invited them over to have that discussion with us. But again, I respectfully request that you stick with the staff recommendation for continuance to December 13th. And I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have of me.
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Oh, is that you, Frances?
That was me. I'm sorry. I have no questions at this time. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So staff would like to just make a couple of comments. There was an item stated, I believe that the response to Mrs. Hernandez was on the day of the meeting itself. I have an email that was sent to Mrs. Hernandez on October 18th, two days before the scheduled community meeting at 1 something PM, responding to her inquiries and informing her of the meeting that the developer held and part of staff not. Staff cannot negotiate on the behalf of the residents. That is not our job. We take the information and that information is presented to the Planning Commission as a recommendation. Staff is recommending that the item be continued to December 13th. That was the previous goal when it was previously continued to amass the information that was required to address the concerns. That has been done. And while I do sympathize with this Thanksgiving, this Christmas, but part of the new process that we have is that you could be here in California, you could be outside of California, you could even be outside of the country and you can participate via Zoom. So by having the ability to participate, if you're not here in person, it makes the process more available to everyone. So again, staff's recommendation is that the item be continued to December 13th. We are fully prepared to have that presentation on the 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. So is that all that's wishing to speak tonight? Yes, okay. Do they need to sign a card before they speak or are they able to come up and speak? Okay. Yes. Please state your name and city of residence.
Carla Velazquez, a resident there at 10730 on Lake Center Park Lane. First of all, I wanted to kind of reply to the comment of this gentleman here. I did send him an email asking him if we could meet a different day and time because I couldn't meet on that day and he replied as, no, he couldn't. And I do understand that there was only one resident there. I've already talked to her. And the other thing is too, is I do agree with Irma and Norma about another date because people are concentrating on the holidays. And the fact that dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, it is stressful. You know, this is not something that we want. So we don't need this added on our plate right now. We like to enjoy the holidays. And really, honestly, you know, I see that is trying to get pushed forward. At the end of the day, I just feel that it's all about dollars. It's not about this community. I've lived here 30-plus years. My parents graduated from Santa Fe High. My kids have graduated from there and now my children attend the school districts here. There is so much traffic as there is right now. And I know that you guys put that traffic monitor out there on Florence and Telegraph, but if I'm not mistaken, it was only out there for one day. I don't remember seeing that strip out there for a whole week. So I don't see how testing the traffic or whatever, that's what you guys were doing, one day or two days is even enough. You know, try driving through there every day and then building that. How are those people going to be getting in and out? Every week, there's an accident, every week. So I just ask again that this does get pushed out until after the first of the year so we can at least enjoy the time with our families in the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Alejandro Witron. I live in Lake Center Park Lane, Santa Fe Springs. I'd like to address the Commission to hopefully explain from my point of view the point about requesting a meeting with the city planning department, not with the developer. We understand and respect Mr. Chad Brown's time and his efforts as to what he's trying to do. But it's not about that. It's not about the design of the building, how far it is from the wall, how far it is from Florence, whether or not they're going to be looking into our backyards or not, which I think is a valid concern. It's more about the location of a high-density residential complex at this site. It is not conducive to building a community the way Santa Fe Springs has in the past. It's taking a completely different turn. We would like to request, we have requested numerous times, meeting with our planning department director in particular, and we have not had any. And we have not had any, any response. It's not about negotiating with them. It's about just simply feeling like we're being heard. And explaining to the planning department our concerns. And why we are concerned about those things. Also, the letter that my wife referred to that was submitted weeks and weeks ago. That was the main reason why we were concerned about this whole project from the beginning. It's nothing to do with the developer. And again, with all due respect to Malia Holmes and Mr. Chad Brown, those concerns are not for him to address. They're for the city to address, for our building department to address. That's what we're looking for. We have not received a response to those concerns, which you guys have a copy of that letter. City council has a copy of that letter. We are lost. We are trying to be constructive in this effort. We would like some housing to be developed there. But we would like to be part of it so that we can build a community. So we can continue to live in this community where I have lived most of my life. We ask you to take the time to review everything that's going on. Whether you decide to have this meeting in December or January, really. It doesn't really matter, in my opinion, as long as you review the information and you're ready to make a vote, an intelligent vote. That is good for the community and also for Malia Holmes. Maybe there's a way we can work with them. They build single home residences. I'm sure the numbers are not going to add up to what they're figuring right now. But in my opinion, we have misled Malia Holmes by our planning department letting them. Think, or letting them know that yes, the city, the planning department will change the parcel. The denomination of that parcel to R3. The city doesn't have to do that. The city willingly is doing to, is going to do that. And that allows Malia Holmes to figure out the numbers. Well, this is how much we can build. This is how much we can make. Of course, they're going to go for that. But if you change it to R1 instead of R3, all the numbers are different. Maybe Malia Holmes is not going to be interested in the property anymore. But why would I, our building department? Go as far as misleading. A developer that yes, we can do this for you, Mr. Developer. Without checking with anybody, without see residents concerned. I ask you again, please look at the information, the date, whatever the date you want it to be. But look at all the information and make an intelligent and educated vote as to what you have in front of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would wish to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing there's no one else wishing to speak, could I get a motion and a second for continuance? To December 13th.
Commissioner Carvahal, I move recommendation.
Moved by Commissioner Carvahal. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Arnold. I'll second the motion.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Most definitely, Chairperson. Commissioner Carvahal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Nay.
Commissioner Rounds?
Nay.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Nay.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
The motion is three to two.
I'd like to make an alternate motion, please.
Yes.
I'd like to continue this item until January 10th, 2022.
I'll second that motion. Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Carvahal?
Nay.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnold?
Nay.
Passes three to.
Okay. So ordered. Moving on to item number eight, public hearing. Sequa Negative Declaration, a request to amend the existing conditional use permit. And allow the construction and operation of a rhodium purification line within the existing building located at 15611. Reason place. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Vince Velasco to please present number eight.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight I'm presenting the amendment of conditional use permit case number 497. As you can see on the screen, the property is located on the northeast corner of Carmenita Road and Alondra Boulevard. The general plan land use designation is listed as industrial. The zoning is listed as M2 heavy manufacturing. The property address is 15611, Resin Place. And the applicant is Heraeus Precious Metals North America LLC, or otherwise shortened to Heraeus. So just to give you a little background on the Heraeus facility, again, located on the northeast corner of Carmenita and Alondra. It is comprised of two existing parcels. There's one smaller portion at the corner, which the applicant leases. It is comprised of one building. And the larger portion, the applicant owns, and there are nine existing buildings. Years ago, the street Resin Place was vacated and now is listed as a private street. And it should be noted that the proposed work is going to be located in Building 5, which is the central building on the property. A little background for you, in 1970, PGP Industries Incorporated obtained a business license for a metal products use. However, in 1991, the fire department did an inspection and it revealed that the use was reclaiming precious metals. And therefore, at the time, they initiated a interim operating permit, IOP, which no longer exists for the record. And it was given as an interim until the CUP was approved. And then in 1998, after demonstrating compliance with the IOP conditions, the planning commission approved CUP 497. For a precious metal reclamation and product manufacturing use. Then in the year 2000, Heraeus purchased the facility from PGP. And in 2005, the rhodium purification that existed within the original CUP was shut down to make room for a new ion exchange system. Because the rhodium purification was then conducted at their facilities in Germany. The request before you tonight is to amend the existing CUP and allow the construction and operation of a rhodium purification line in conjunction with the existing use. Now let's start with what is rhodium? Rhodium is a silver-white metallic element that's highly reflective and resistant to corrosion. Here's a rock, rhodium. It is also the rarest and most expensive precious metal in the world currently. It is one of six metals in the platinum group. Also within that group are platinum, palladium, osmium, iridium, and ruthenium. Another fun fact for you, rhodium comes from the Greek word rhodon, which means rose. And it's referring to the rose-red color of rhodium salts when it was initially discovered. In your staff report, we're lists of all of the proposed equipment and chemicals. And I'll be the first to say that I'm not a chemist, so I wish I could explain this a lot better than I could. But I can tell you that the process is through the magic of science. But in all seriousness, if there are legitimate questions on the process and the chemistry, I do have the applicant on the Zoom to answer those technical questions. Rhodium metal is rarely used by itself and almost always is an alloy. Some products that come from rhodium purification include aircraft spark plugs. Jewelry. Lab crucibles. And catalytic converters. This is the proposed site plan again. The proposed work will be within Building 5. However, there is a proposal for five exterior tanks. This is the proposed floor plan. And as you can see, the rhodium purification line will exist within the easterly portion of the building. Here is the floor plan with rendering of the equipment. And here is a cool little sectional drawing that'll show you what the equipment will look like after it's installed. So now to go on to the outdoor equipment. There is a proposal of three nitrogen oxide towers at a height of 19 feet, 8 inches. One hydrochloric acid tower scrubber at 20 feet high. And one 4,000 gallon wastewater holding tank at 17 feet, 7 inches high. And just to give you a perspective of those heights, the existing building, Building 5, is currently 17 feet in height. Now help to ensure that those proposed outdoor equipment will not be visible from the public view. We had the applicant prepare a line of sight drawing. So this is the view from Alondra Boulevard. You can see in orange is the proposed equipment. Now Resin Place does have trees on both sides of the street. As well as an existing 17-foot-high screen fence. And these are the line of sights, not only from the property line, but as well as across the street as well. And as you can see through those lines, the equipment is not proposed to be visible from the public street. And just another perspective, this is a street view, so you can see the existing resin place with the existing trees, the existing 17-foot-high screen fence. And this is the area in which you would be looking at the proposed outdoor tanks. Now we're looking at Carmenita Road. Similarly, this is the proposed equipment behind Building 5. Again, another existing 17-foot-high screen fence along Carmenita Road. And again, a line of sight showing that the proposed equipment will not be visible. And here's another street view. This one's from Carmenita Road. And this would be the general area that you'd be looking at for the direction of the existing, or the proposed tanks. Now staff did want to consider the fact that this rhodium process will add 12 additional new jobs to the existing facility. It was, it should be noted that there's a modification permit on file that was approved in 2007, mod 1185, for the reduction of required parking. That reduction allowed for 157 required parking spaces, and at the time, they had 125 employees. Now this is an updated employee chart. And as proposed, there will be a total of 146 employees. However, that is separated within three shifts, and they also have a few employees that are working remotely or off-site. And you can see the hours between 2:00 PM and 2:30 PM, that is the peak crossover times. And there's a total of 110 employees. And as you can see, that is less than the 125 employees originally identified within the mod in 2007. And as such, there is a surplus of 47 parking stalls at peak time. And since the proposed changes to employee counts do not intensify the parking demand. Staff determined that there is no need for an amendment of mod 1185. This is just for the record. There was one environmental document that was prepared for the project. It was an ISND, which is Initial Study Negative Declaration. It was prepared by York Engineering. And since it was a negative declaration, there were no mitigations found to be needed. This document was emailed to the planning commissioners on October 26th. We did receive a few comments regarding the initial study negative declaration. There were two, specifically from LA County Sanitation Districts and LA County Fire Department. And York Engineering did provide responses, and those were attached to the staff report provided to you. Also, we were in direct communication with the city of Cerritos, since the property does border the city of Cerritos. We did want to give them the courtesy that the project was being amended. We did filter those questions and they formally submitted a letter indicating that they had no other further comments or conditions to add to the project. The public hearing notice was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet on October 27th. As well as published in the Woodyer Daily News on October 28th. And for your consideration, Heraeus is an existing business in Santa Fe Springs. The use itself, as you could see, has been around for about 40 years. Heraeus themselves, about 20 years. The rhodium purification was a component of the operation when the CUP was originally granted. And now they are proposing more sophisticated technology than what was originally there before. Also, the subject property is surrounded by various industrial uses. And the proposed equipment will be, will not be visible from the public streets, both Carmenita and Alondra, as mentioned before. Also, it should be noted that the project will require other approvals. Including an air permit from Southern California Air Quality Management District. As well as a standard hazardous waste permit B, or Part B permit from DTSC. And they will amend their wastewater sewage discharge permit from LA County Sanitation Districts. As well as go through the city's building department for billing permits, TIs for the reactors and the scrubbers as well. And they will also need fire department approval for the hazardous materials use and storage. And lastly, there was a chart within the staff report indicating the changes in chemical deliveries. And as noted, the proposed project will not significantly impact traffic or transportation resources. As a result, staff is recommending the approval and adoption of the initial study negative declaration, as well as approve the amendment of CUP 497. Subject to the conditions as stated within the attached resolution and adopt resolution number 199-2021. Which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. And then lastly, just for fun, I have a joke for you. I once told the chemist you joke, it got no reaction. All right, all right, that's it. I conclude my presentation. Again, the applicant is on the line if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners at this time?
Vince, I see that Wayne's starting to rub off on you a little bit.
Is it the bow tie? Does it give it away?
It's not a bad thing. I have, and I should have stopped you way back when you were showing the line of sight.
Okay.
The one off of Carmenita, and you had the little red box.
All right.
I noticed right there.
Okay. Off Carmenita, yes, okay. Oh, yeah.
That one.
Okay.
What's that visible above already?
I was going to make a comment and say, please ignore the existing equipment that was previously approved. But I figured it was better to move on, but we're going back to it. So yes, I can answer that question and say that that is existing equipment. I could not tell you exactly what year.
I could not tell you exactly what year that was approved. It could have been at a time where we didn't look as carefully at visibility concerns.
Okay, I was just curious because evidently the new equipment's gonna be lower than this existing.
Correct, yeah, we have identified to the applicant that any new existing equipment, not only just the the outdoor tanks, but any roof equipment will also not be visible from public view or adjacent properties.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Chair Arnold, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carbajal?
None at this time. I love the presentation, thank you.
Okay, great. The hearing is now open. I would like to call upon the applicant if they wish to speak.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This, my name is Peter Eckert. I'm the director of compliance and support services, and I'm working for years since over thirty-one years. And this is probably this third or fourth time that we can extend our conditional use permit with the modifications which we have done in the past since two thousand. Since Horaeus took over this facility, we invested over a hundred million dollars to improve processes, improve pollution equipment, and make this a better operation. The rhodium purification line will provide us the opportunity so we can reduce transport to Germany, meaning have a sustainable manufacturing in Santa Fe Springs and as well additional employees and operators and make us a better business and a complete precious metal refining facility. So if you have any further questions on the technology what we are using, but it's the most sophisticated what's right now on the market, it will be all automated with P L C controls and high efficiency operation.
Great, thank you. Any questions? From the commissioners? Okay, no questions. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter?
Vice Chair, we see no comment cards.
Okay, great. And could I get a motion in a second, please?
Commissioner Rounds will move staff's recommendation.
Commissioner, hold second.
Motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Could I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, public hearing is closed, thank you.
Commissioner Carbajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
Casters five zero.
Kathia, please. So ordered.
After receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action, the applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed within the city clerk, with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Thank you. Item number nine, public hearing, sequo exemption, section one five three zero two, class two. Development plan approval, D P A case number nine eight five, a request for approval to allow the construction of a new four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three square foot drive-through restaurant and a pertinent improvement on the subject property. Condition use permit case number eight two two, a request for approval to allow the establishment, operation, and maintenance of a four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three square foot drive-through resident within the C four community commercial zone. The subject property is located on one three two two five Telegraph Road within the C four community commercial zone. I would like to call upon associate planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number nine. No.
There is a change to this item. Staff is recommending to continue the item to December thirteen, planning commission meeting. Staff received an email from the applicant that the property owner would like to have additional time to review the condition. So as recommended, staff wanted to continue to the December meeting.
Okay, great.
The property where S and P Restaurant is right now?
Yeah, that's correct.
So is that, okay.
Could I get a motion in a second to continue this item till?
I just want to make sure that we open the public hearing.
Oh, we still have to do that, okay. Okay, so I would like to, the public hearing is now open. And if there's anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the podium.
Online, we have Mr. Ferreros.
Bless you.
Yes, can I speak now?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to comment that last Tuesday I requested the documents for this project from staff, and they said they were gonna provide me a link to the documents. As of today, I have not received that link, so I have not gotten an opportunity to review the documents. Second, I would like to know what sequo exemption number did this project receive? And why was it exemption and not a negative deck or a negative, negative deck? The final comment I would like to say is that, that since this is a new building, I don't think that the city should allow any new building to connect to the sewer line unless they allow neighboring properties to connect to the existing sewer line. That's my comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter?
Vice Chair, I see no one else.
See no one else wishing to speak, I would like to close the public hearing. And could I get a? So just keep it open? Okay. So could I have a motion in a second for continuance to December thirteenth, please?
I'll move that we have a continuance to December thirteenth on this item.
Commissioner Carbajal, second.
Okay, great. Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Carbajal. Now, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Most definitely, Vice Chair, Commissioner Carbajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
Casters five zero.
So ordered. Kathia, please. Oh, okay. So moving on to consent item, number ten. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the planning commission.
Commissioner Rounds would like to move in A, B, and C.
I get a second, please?
Commissioner Arnold, motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rounds, second by Chair Arnold. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Most definitely. Commissioner Carbajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
Casters five zero.
So ordered. Item number eleven, announcements. Are there any announcements from the commissioners tonight? Starting with Mr. Rounds, any announcements?
Boy, it sure got dark early tonight. Other than that, everybody have a, have a good, safe week and weekend.
Great. Any other announcements?
This is Commissioner Arnold. I just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would like to give my appreciation to the city council for reconnecting me with the, with the planning commission. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve the city.
Glad to have you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Carbajal, I want to say again, I, well, I hope everyone also has a great Thanksgiving. Please be careful out there. I lost another member to COVID, so please be careful, everyone.
You too. Commissioner Hernandez?
I just want to say wish well to everybody and that as these weeks and months come, that we can all work in harmony together and find some solutions to all our wishes and and well, we're good still for the city overall, for everybody, okay?
Thank you. And I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and be safe out there. And Chairman Arnold, I'm glad you're still here with the commission. Glad to have you, you're very valuable to us.
Here, here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your prayers and thoughts, and I'm doing a little bit better. I've got a C T scan scheduled for this coming Wednesday to see how the cancer is progressing or if it's, if the chemo has been working, so I'm, I'm thinking that the chemo has been working. And hopefully, this is gonna be, this isn't gonna be my last Thanksgiving. And I'll be seeing you for many, many, many months ahead. Thank you very much.
And we all send our prayers, and, and I gotta tell you, you sound great. You sound, you really sound good.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, keep on there, buddy, sound good.
Okay, are there any announcements from the staff?
Yes, just real quickly, I'd like to start by just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and then sending thoughts and loves to you, Ken Arnold. We do have a couple of development updates we'd like to provide to you. First one is right around the corner on Pioneer Boulevard. If you've noticed the green fencing that went up recently, I just wanted to let you know that there is an industrial development that is in the works that was approved by the planning commission, I believe, last year. They are undergoing oil well leak testing, and so that's what they're doing currently. They will need to amend two of the three D P As that are on file for the, this project in order to alter two of the three building sizes, and that'll be coming to you in the near future. Also, the property at one three seven six seven Freeway Drive, the former Suzuki Building, there was a facade improvement that was approved earlier this year, and we just wanted to let you know that that project is underway and they have started construction. And then lastly, there was a development building that was entitled, oh, I want to say a couple of years ago, that was recently approved or recently finalized at one three two one five Cambridge Street. And we want to let you know that Peloton, who is currently leading the industry in fitness equipment, will be that tenant for their warehousing and distribution of fitness equipment. And that's all I have.
And then other announcements from staff tonight?
Evening, I have one announcement. Just wanted to share with you that, you know, after about eighteen, nineteen months of hard work, we do have a draft general plan. I believe I left a hard copy for Mr. Hernandez as well as Mr. Rounds. And it is, both the draft general plan as well as the E I R has been circulated for public review. Initiated the forty-five day review period on November third, and it will conclude on December seventeenth. We also do plan on holding a public hearing to solicit comments from the public at the city council meeting on December seventh. Also, want to make sure that you're aware, as well as the, the community is aware that we are holding a community workshop next Wednesday, November seventeenth. It will be at Town Center Hall, it'll be open house style from six o'clock to seven thirty P M. So we do invite everyone to come, we'll have different tables, we'll have hard copies of everything there as well. Staff will be available for questions. And I guess, I don't have any photos, but if you have noticed, you know, previously there were some screens on Noroc and Telegraph Road with graphics. Due to high winds, some of those screens needed some maintenance and care. We've been working with a consultant to help maintain that, fix, you know, rinse some of the screens. We, some, some mending of the screens that is underway as we speak. We're told that, that repair work should be done by the end of this week. So just wanted to let you guys know about that in case you guys see, you know, the activities occurring. And I'll, I'll share some pictures at the next meeting with updated photos of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just want to say thank you to the staff for providing the material I requested and stuff in a timely manner. Thank you so much, very proficient.
Any other announcements?
Have a, a statement. Juan, I just want to thank you and everybody in planning and Wayne. I've been a part of this for day one for the general plan, and I just love how you disseminated the information. And anytime I have a question or other residents, I ask them to call to get it clarified, and I just, just kudos on this project to everybody in planning. You've done a lot of hard work, along with the consultants, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other announcements from staff? Okay, see no other announcements, I would like to adjourn this meeting at, looks like seven fourteen.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.